Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Acton Board of Selectmen's meeting, March 17th, 2021. We're going to call the meeting to order, and we're going to pledge allegiance now.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next up is the Town Administrator's weekly update.
All right, just a few things for you this week. First is to let you know that the transfer station does have an opening, a part-time opening, I think it's sent through an email, but just to officially go on the record, we do have a posting going for a part-time position from April 15th through, I think, September or October. Applications are available at the Clerk's office, and Bob has set a deadline of Friday, I think, the 25th, so that he hopefully can start interviews the following week. So I'll reach out to the liaison, who's at Kim, and we'll get you involved in the process once we narrow it down to a couple of applicants. All right, next is just a follow-up from the warrant and finance responses that we mentioned last week. We told you that one of the members had a list of questions. The Treasurer and I did work on getting them out. We sent them out electronically. We also sent hard copies. I know that the Board of Selectmen is meeting with the warrant and finance next week to go over the policy that you have in force, and I guess I would just respectfully ask that we find a way to... These questions need to pertain to the warrants that are in front of them, because we spent many, many hours working on the reserve account, the dam accounts, the Seventh Street, to put this together, and certainly we're happy to do that, but those are more freedom of information from regular people. It's not on a warrant in front of the committee. So if you review the warrant and finances ordinance, it clearly states that they will do due diligence and, you know, research and recommend on all of the warrant articles, but at this point, short of the school and the petition article, there's no warrant in front of them. So it really took a lot of time, so Michelle and I would ask that you reiterate that it should be on current warrants in front of them. All right, next item to discuss with you is just an update on ZBA. I notified you last week that the town had been served in a court case. We do have Derwood Parkinson, who's going to be handling and representing on our behalf. Spoke to the Chair of the zoning board today, and we are calling a meeting together of the ZBA members. It'll be probably the first or second week of April. We're trying to tie down a date that works for everybody. And essentially, the ZBA needs to do a finding of facts. You know, they went through the public hearing, there were no concerns about that, they made a decision, but there are steps they have to take, finding of facts that we're required to turn over to the court, so they need to get back together to do those finding of facts, make a formal decision, make sure it's signed, so that it's something we can send to Superior Court on behalf of the Town of Acton. With that, same ZBA being said, we received a Freedom of Information request from the Appeals Attorney, asking for everything on the two cases, anything tied to that the town was in possession regarding the Pearson property. So we're in the process of pulling all that together and hopefully getting it out to them this week. Someone spoke to me about the positions that are going to be open this year at the town meeting, where we didn't have one last year. So, for example, if we had warrant and finance committee member terms that came due in June of 2020, we know that the COVID pandemic has held them over and kept them in their seat, but the question is, so when do the new terms expire? You know, are we pretending that, like, they got elected in 2020 and their two years started in June of 2020, or are they new terms based on when the town meeting is scheduled? So we did send off the question to Legal, and May Municipal indicated that we go by the date that they were expired. So for warrant and finance, for example, you'll have what we'll call one-year terms, because it would have gone from June of '20 to June of '22, and then you'll have the regular two-year terms that go from June of '21 to June of '23. And that will be the same on any other committee, road committee, or anybody that came due during the pandemic. So their terms don't change as far as the timing. We just have to adjust the article some, so it's going to be kind of tricky on pulling that all together on the warrants. We did tie down full commitment of the fairgrounds on June 19th, so it is official. The election will take place the Tuesday prior, which I think we said was June 8th. Is that right? I said the wrong election day on camera. Let's see, June 8th. So election day will be June 8th, and then town meeting will be the following Saturday, the 19th, so we'll need to close town hall and make appropriate actions for that to come together.
We are closing the transfer station.
So...
We used to close the transfer station so those people can go to town.
Well, we used to, and the Superintendent, you know, and I'll have a conversation with him. In the last, at least, five years, he's told us not to, because they wouldn't go anyways. I mean, that was the Superintendent's words to me. We did it probably 10 years ago, so, I mean, I guess we can take a poll of the employees.
Well, I mean, our...
But they probably won't go, just so you know.
If they don't feel like going, I guess it's not an issue. We just want to make sure they have the opportunity to go, because they are town employees.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. So we'll reach out to Bob and make sure that he's got the option of closing that Saturday or not. All right, next is, just to let you know, we received an email from, or a letter from Inland Fisheries and Wildlife that the Clerk's books balance through December 20th. We did a total of $96,399 in inland fishery sales in 2020. So, and that was with the pandemic, and that doesn't include any excise. That's just the amount that we would have sent to them. York County Budget Committee meeting is coming up on April 14th. They've got some vacancies countywide from the Budget Committee, and they are asking, as elected officials, that you send some representation. I scanned and emailed you the certified letter they sent, but if anybody wants any more information on that, I can get you that. We received a notification from the State of Maine that the last payment for Goat Hill was approved and coming in, so the last reimbursement, remember the last time, a month or two ago, you signed the forms for the grants, so that was approved, and their last reimbursement should be deposited any time now. Garden beds, I just wanted to mention, I know I sent you an email, because I left it off last week's agenda. We did give the librarian permission, but she's going to be putting in some garden beds on the side of the building. Won't interfere with anything, just to... She's got one of those home ec groups working on it, so... And last item, so this was our first week putting the agenda online. We did have some technical difficulties, but it was up there by 6:00. The Board didn't say it was before we closed. It was sometime on Tuesday, so happy to say it made it up. The agenda that you have in front of you, I thought it would be easier to, for clarity, that I'm underlining any items that I add after the fact, so you'll be able to keep track of, you know, what was posted and what wasn't. So your underlying agenda items have been added since it was posted. That's all I have for you tonight, Madam Chair.
All righty. Warrant and bills, we all signed?
All signed.
Okay. So I guess I need approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor. Minutes of the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, March 10th.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor.
All opposed.
Department head, committee chair, updates. Do we have anybody here? Okay. So we'll move on to old business. A, budget recap, undesignated fund use.
So I thought it would be a good time to start talking about the workshop that we had yesterday, and now that we know that the school's budget for the public, if you're not aware, the town and the school both have policies that say that we only can have approximately three months' worth of bills in an undesigned fund account. Depending on the county taxes, and depending on the tax levy, and depending on what happens, generally for the town is about 1.3, 1.4 million. According to the Treasurer, the school has, excuse me, the town has about $500,000 in excess of that. So as we start working on our tax calculations, we are planning on moving $500,000 forward to offset property taxes. While doing this, the school also has a similar undesignated fund balance, and at their last meeting, they voted to move about $400,000 forward. So their budget that we originally looking at has now dropped by about $400,000. So knowing that both of those funds have to be spent, used, you know, you can only leave so much in the savings account if you have a policy that says you can't have more than three months' worth. One of the conversations that we had was, if you overspend in certain departments, you know, roads, for example, if we give them both $300,000 more, then the next year it's going to look like it's a, you know, you're taking away.
Yeah, that's going to, what's going to happen is, because we're getting an extra $400,000, it's like hitting the lottery, you know? Okay, that's what happened. And what happens is, next year, we're not going to get that 400, so if we budget with that 400 this year, next year, we're going to have to make a cut.
Right.
And so with that, what we went over yesterday, what we've decided to do is do some house cleaning, take care of some stuff there that, some bills there that we had loans on, we added some maintenance.
You want to go over that list?
Yeah, let's do that. I think it's a good idea, because, I mean, really, I think we're taking full advantage of, you know, the idea that we have some spare money, and it's not going to affect next year's budget.
Right.
It's only going to help us next year, because with all this stuff paid off, that money will be more accessible to us next year, meaning less expenses.
Right. And you don't want to get in the habit of the tax rate fluctuating, dropping, you know, dropping it 50 cents and then going back up 50 cents, because that's, you know, not going to...
Well, no, because the problem is, if we were to drop the tax rate, so we didn't spend that 400, that tax rate would drop so much that next year, to make up for it, it would be huge.
We did that one year, and it didn't work out well the following year.
No.
No.
So what we did is, instead of increasing line item budgets for departments and that, we've already had that situated, we were talking about paying off the town shed, that's a $250,000 loan that we have. We have the Goat Hill project, pay that off. We set up, we're reintroducing the dams, oh, not dam, the bridge in Culver, account there for engineering and all that, and...
Possible furnaces, the town hall furnace here and a furnace on the other side, which was...
We felt that the building, MMA wants us, the insurance companies talked about the sign and this and that. We felt it's time now that we take care of that, the furnace, everybody knows that when we're, it's really cold in here, we've got to shut the furnace off so everybody can hear us. And our furnace guys told us right out there that, you know, we ain't got long left on that furnace.
Or the other one.
Or the other one, but that one's, you know, really, really bad, and that one's on its way.
What about the generator?
And, of course, and we got the generator, yep.
Or the fire department.
Yeah, and stuff that we had talked about possibly not doing because of, you know, not knowing, you know, we didn't want to raise the tax rate. This got us in a position where we can still maintain and take care, do some house cleaning.
Keep the tax rate flat is the goal.
Yeah. We don't want to lower it.
Yeah, and they're not items that we're going to have to worry about next year.
Right. Yeah, I think you got everything covered.
Yeah.
So we're starting to work on the warrant. Once the warrant and finance meet Monday and make the recommendation on the petition article, then, and we get that signed next Wednesday, we'll have a draft of the town meeting warrant ready for you guys, so look out next Wednesday, and then by the following Monday, when they meet on the 29th, we'll have copies ready for the warrant and finance to start looking at it. So we're in pretty good shape.
So moving on to new business. We have MAB and Associates. We're going to start out talking about the Canal Bridge, and then, once we're done with that, we'll move on to the Road Bridge.
Yeah, so we're going to...
Got it, Jen.
Mike Bean, MAB and Associates, how are you?
Good.
What's happening?
Well, Mr. Bean, you're going to want to address the Board, and then they'll let you know if they want you to answer any questions. I know that the one, one big question that we, that the Board has had, actually, there's been two questions that we've heard, and as I mentioned to you beforehand, we've invited our warrant and finance committee and some of our road committee members, hoping if they have any questions, they can certainly have a chance to ask you as well. But, Kim, one of the big questions that you and I heard from a couple of people was, explain to us, well, actually, why don't we do this? Why don't you start by telling us a little bit about yourself, your background, and what the Canal Project looks like, and then we'll get into the questions.
Well, I used to keep a big company and keep his, like, 65 employees and do water and bridges and airports, and in 2002, I kind of regrouped and started focusing on small-town US Ag. There's so many towns faced with red-listed bridges from the 30s and 40s. It's a fact, 60% to 70% of them are failing, becoming structural deficient. The typical protocol is, I'm not going to bling and lang, but I'm trying to do this as quick as I can. The typical protocol for small towns, and no disrespect to selectmen, and their typical hardware store owners, bankers, lawyers, whatever, the state comes in and does a bi-annual inspection on bridges and rebate them. They continue to become deficient, and they issue paperwork to towns explaining what the status of all their bridges are. Selectmen often panic because of the funding and look to sign up for Bridge Aid. It's a program the state offers where the state pays a portion and the town pays a portion. What they don't tell you is, they don't help you with the engineering, and oftentimes, the engineering costs are 150,000 to 200,000 to design a bridge. The funds available presently for 2034, if you're in the Bridge Aid program, who knows where the costs go then? So we started reaching out to small towns and offering them a different solution with the Design Build Fast Track bridge replacements. I've probably done 150 of them. And I've got a table full of them to do this year. I was approached on Canal Road by Brock Mitchell, the road agent from Wakefield. Came out, looked at him, met with him and the selectmen. Their concern was the historic preservation of the arch, and I get it, I've done them like that. So what we looked at doing was enveloping it and going right over the top of it with a bridge. Leave it alone, don't touch any of the arch. Because it's staying intact, there's really no concerns for any static pressure on it, where we're going to put a 34-foot deck over a 20-foot span. So our footers and bridge deck are well off the back of the arch. To do the bridge calc's on it, it's a, the deck pieces weigh 17 tons. It's like 230 pounds a square foot, vertical static pressure on the footers, which is really minimal, and they're set way back from the arch. The bridge won't touch the arch at all. When we looked at it, we looked at overlapping it and just leaving a space, not even taking the pavement off, so any infiltration or deterioration would get into the stones. We opted, we looked at exposing it and possibly membrane in the rock. It just wasn't feasible, a regular size of the stone and the sheer chances of getting the membrane to stick to the old stone arch. So we thought it was best to leave it alone, leave the pavement on it, and put a bridge over the top of it. The biggest cost of it is the precast deck. We come in, and in fact, I think Wakefield's already taking care of the trees that I needed removed for the crane. We'll pull the guardrail, excavate for footers, put in structural fill, put in the footings, bring in a precast deck. The decks we, the decks we do are 5,000-pound concrete, they're precast, all epoxy reba, they meet the HL93 loading capacity, which is the new federal standard. The days of H20 and H25 are kind of gone, the new standard is HL93. We set a deck on it, we pin it together with closure hardware, membrane it, gravel it, put up guardrail, pavement, typically on a job, two weeks, three weeks. We just did a big one at the airport in Wakefield, we were there four weeks. We do give you stamped engineered drawings, and we do give you the Form 4 bridge calc's, which is a requirement by the federal government. You say to the state, we've replaced this bridge, they want the Form 4 bridge calc's. We give you that as part of the project. Submit the Form 4 of them, and you're off the list.
Thank you.
I mean, if you probably have questions, I'm not going to go on and on spewing off about myself, but I did, I did give you a reference package with several completed projects, letters from municipalities such as yourself, with some pictures. Hopefully, that helps you understand kind of what we do.
Yeah, I think you kind of touched on the question that the selectmen have heard in regards to the historical piece, that they, you know, the concerns that I fielded through my office were, you know, he's not going to touch the old one, and you've made that one very clear.
We've done it before. Like I was saying to you earlier, we did one in Sanbenton, actually, on the road to my farm, where it's 26 feet off the water, and the old stone abutments were real touchy. It was the old part of town, the violin factory in the central part of town, and we looked at an approach where it was a 26-foot bridge, and we put a 46 in, and we actually put approach slabs and footers to pull the weight of that deck off the stone and get it sitting back on new footers. So we considered that when we looked at this with the selectman of Wakefield, Dan Brock, and we won't impact that arch at all, and I thought it was kind of neat.
The Board have other questions before we open it up?
My main concern was, you know, the bridge underneath, you know, I just wanted to make sure that you had taken that into consideration and, you know, knew the historical part of it, and...
I get, I get that, and again, the approach when we come is, is those people paying the bill. I didn't fly here in a helicopter, I didn't drive here in a Jaguar. There's so many small towns in Vermont, Connecticut, Rhode Island, we've done six of them in Manhattan, where their bids are 2 million, and we walk in for 350,000, and they think we're nuts. But it's, it's what it is, and, you know, they're in it out in three weeks. It's an innovative concept, it's a new idea. I'm the only contractor doing these kind of replacements. You may find one or two, but not the repetitive bridges like I do.
How long does a bridge like this last? What's its...
I'm supposed to tell you 100 years, but I think 150. And the state's bridges don't last that long. This is a two-foot-thick deck, all 5,000-pound concrete, epoxy reba. It's all poured in a climate-controlled environment. My precaster's Concrete Systems from Hudson, New Hampshire, they make all and every bridge I build, and I've done them for 38, 39 years.
Do you guys use any sort of, like, additive or anything in your concrete to prevent salt erosion?
They, they use several admixtures, and like I said, 5,000 PSI concrete precast, you can't pour that in the field. What we do, after we set the deck and tie it together with stainless steel rod, what it does is, we bring in the deck pieces in pieces, whether it's four, five, six, seven pieces. They're typically four, five feet wide, 34, 44 feet long, two feet thick. We tie them together with a 1-inch stainless steel rod, closure hardware, sucks them together, and then we have a shear key between each deck. It's like a 7.5-inch-deep shear key, inch and a half wide. We fill that with a non-shrink grout of state-approved product, and what it does is provide transitional wheel displacement. In other words, if I set in five pieces of deck and your two tires hit two of them, by tying the deck slabs together with closure hardware, grouting those shear keys, it gives us transitional wheel displacement, so that the whole deck takes the vehicle wheel load. But then, we cover the entire deck with Royston 104 bridge barrier membrane. We don't just do the seams, we cover, we cover the whole deck. A lot of them I do are on dirt, and we advise small towns, look someday, in your next year, hide 30-ton of paving somewhere and lock it in, just to protect your investment. Even if it's a dirt road, just pave the bridge in 10 feet each side of it, just to protect what you've got. But the Royston membrane will work on a dirt road. My advice is to try to pave it when you can. Obviously, Canal and I call it Parker Road, they're both paved, so they'll get paid.
So on, on the estimate that you gave us, we're getting a price right now of $165,000, okay? Then there's an additional price of $30,000 per town. That's going to cover the paving, the excavation work on each side of the bridge.
I was going to say, there's some copies of the estimate, I don't know if you have in front of you, are the letter that came from Wakefield. I'm not sure if he's seen the cover letter. Dennis, would you just hand him, do you mind handing him one of those?
What I said to Brock, just so I can clarify myself, the, when we first priced it, it was 150 grand.
Yep.
It was in March of 2020.
Yep.
Brock called me again in September and asked if I'd run it. So the deal with me is, I can control my in-house costs, I own all the equipment, and we try to treat you guys right. You can take that for a grain of salt.
No, it's not, not what I'm asking, I just want to make sure we've got our numbers right, so we know what we're budgeting for.
What the deal is, is the precast. I went back to CSI in September, and the price had changed about 5,800 bucks. It's fly-ass concrete, labor, reba. What I typically tell towns is, look, don't build it today, but give me a letter of intent to award, so that I can lock the precaster in, sign with him. I need to start sharp drawings, they're engineered drawings, so I can get them to them, so they can make the bridge. A lot of times, what I do with towns is say, like Wakefield, they ordered the bridge a year ahead of time. Just, just give me a letter of intent to award, so I can sign with them, tell them I need drawings now, lock the price, make it, leave it in your yard. Typically, when I come, the bridge is made. I'm not coming here and ripping your road up and calling a bridge. It's all done and waiting for me. We demo in three or four days, the crane's coming, yeah, let's have it in. But to answer your question, right now, it went up 5,800 bucks. And then Brock came back to me and said, I want you to carry the paving, so we have a complete package to give Acton. I don't typically do the paving, and I'm going to explain why real quickly, because you're going to deal with it on Parker Road, I included it, but when I go out to do one of these bridges, the 30, 40, so let's say I disturb 60 or 70 feet of paving, for me to call a paver in Brattleboro, Vermont, or Hickford, Connecticut, I'm getting charged 250, 300 bucks a ton. They bring the whole team and only play one end, so to speak.
Yep.
Because I'm asking for 30-ton, 25-ton, where you towns have an annual contract with a paving company that goes up to bid every year, and you have to come in and do this road, this road, you're locked into him for 80 bucks, 90 bucks a ton. So a lot of times, I say, I don't vote the paving. You want it, I'll give it to you. Why should I charge you 15 grand for paving when you can get it done for 3 or 4 grand? So in discussion with Brock recently, on the third quote, I just reworked it again, he said, include that paving, just so we can go to Acton and say, look, we're covered with everything that we need, and if we can get it done cheaper than you can, I'll gladly credit you guys the money and you guys hire a paver.
That's right. Do you know what date is that? Is that the February 23rd bid that we're looking at? I know there's a couple of gentlemen from Wakefield here.
And I think Brock's taken care of that. He's got, got those people to phone on it that were very...
Yeah, we've already, I mean, our road commissioner, Adam, he's already discussed paving that road anyways, kind of injunction with what you guys are doing. I'm just, I just want to make sure that the $30,000 per town, that's what we're paying.
Can we, can I interrupt you just for a second? Because I think there's two different pieces here, David, and I think that if Mr. Edwards doesn't mind, a call on him for a second. So, because Mr. Bean may not know what about this top letter, and I think that's where the confusion's coming from.
Okay, okay.
So do you mind, Mr. Edwards? Okay. So the contract we have is dated February 23rd, it's from MAB and Associates, and it's for 165,000. So we know that that's, our half would be 82.5. So that's all he knows about, I think. So then, Wakefield has taken the next step, and they've said, okay, in this letter, it clearly says the total is 165,000, but in addition, it would be 30,000 per town, and as I thought I understood it from our workshop, was that 30,000 was for the additional groundwork, paving, and other things?
But that money is for, I believe, if I'm a great point, it went to 165. Is that the final...
Yes.
So 165 is the, is the bridge work that handles with him.
Right.
What we did was, is we were trying to eliminate some work for you, for yourselves, to give you an idea on what we thought that both sides would end up having to do, to pay on either side. We gave you an estimate of about 30,000, we have like 30,000. We believe that you have a little more work to do on your side, because your approaches are bigger than ours.
Yeah.
But didn't we agree that...
But he's going to be doing the work for that, correct?
He's not doing the approaches.
They are.
What we told Brock, we get the bridge in, and we carry it, close the ground, we get on the bridge and off it.
Okay.
But I said, we need to flow on the... We wanted to allow, we want you... We wanted to allow, we want you to do your side. And like I mentioned to you before, that you're a team player. We're more than willing to help and especially Adam. Adam's been down there. We've discussed this many times with him. And like, like Mike said, we're going to take the trees down. We've done all the studies. We've paid all the money for all the studies to do all this. What we're trying to do is just eliminate the million-dollar bridge down there.
We just don't know what's going to happen when we get off. I think 30,000 a piece is a really high.
Right. But for, for clarity, that's not how acting thinks it is.
No, we were under the impression.
We were under the impression that Wakefield was doing all the work on both sides and that's what the 30,000 was going on.
No, 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 no. We were not.
He was, he was doing all the work.
We were under the impression that the extra 30,000 per side, that they were doing everything.
Right. That our guys would not be doing any work.
Because we got the paving, because if you read the quote, you know, it's talking about the 30-ton of paving and, you know, this and that. And when we asked about the, making sure Robinson Road was able to be, you know, graded up, we were said it would be. So, because, you know, originally when we had talked, we talked, you guys are going to do your side. We're going to have our road commissioners do our side. And then all of a sudden, we have a $30,000 number coming in. We think that that's for those guys. That's why I asked you. I apologize. I didn't realize you didn't know that. So.
It's to give you some ideas so that you can take it to your town meeting and put something aside.
Well, I mean, the unfortunate part about it is I think we were a little confused on that. You guys were in the same impression. I wasn't.
Yeah. If you go back and watch the video.
So the problem we're going to have now is we, we, we're going to have our road commissioner give a price. And I thought that price was already included. So now before we, we go and put any numbers together, we got to make sure that price is.
The 30,000 will cover what, Adam? Right. Because that's definitely not how we left the meeting. And the correspondence that, that I've had, that's somehow we, we've miscommunicated and we can certainly fix it. But we were under the impression that one contractor was doing all the work on both sides. You know, we referenced, it would be better that way so that you didn't have one person, you know, cutting the left side of your hair and somebody else cutting the right side. It's one job and let them do it all. And we thought that's what the 30,000 was going towards. So if Adam needs to do the work, we would need Adam to put that price together.
Yes.
To add on to our half of the 82.5.
That price is only put together to give you an idea as well.
Oh, we appreciate that. But for our, for our accounting purposes and for our road commissioners.
Not going to need that.
No, no. And I, and I understand.
I said to Brock, you better, if I believe, I was out there a year ago, Mark, I was thinking, Wakefield comes straight in to a paving. When I get off you guys, you had a road to the left and the road goes straight. And I said to him, I'm going to give you the bridge and I'm not going to leave you hanging. I'm going to get you off the bridge. I mean, it's not going to be a jump. But we're not going to buy 50 loads of crushed gravel and reclaim 3,000 feet of rope. Let's get off the bridge and get paid. If I need some extra gravel to keep acting happy, someone's going to have to help me out with that.
I see. I think that's where it was misinterpreted, that you were going to do that by doing that.
I don't even know where it goes until I get the bridge in.
Yeah. Well, that's, and that's why when I, I had asked our town administrator to contact Wakefield because I wanted to see a set of, I do excavation, so I know how this works. And I didn't see a set of plans for elevations or anything. How are you going to, how are you going to make Robinson Road connect to this bridge when you have no elevation?
Most towns have gravel. Most towns have a pit. Most towns have a hybrid of gravel and gravel. I mean, for me to come in and say, we got it 250, that's not my mission. My mission was to come in to you as cheap as I can and give it to you. And now they're a couple of weeks. But I said to the selectmen in Wakefield, the end of the road agency when you're on site, I'm not going to start getting off the bridge and going down this dirt road and up here reclaiming paving. Let's get it in, get the transitions.
You were, you were trying to make an accessory, get traffic through.
And if I need some extra gravel, maybe him with the dozer and shit, let's just get it.
No, I have no issue with that. I just, I just want to make sure that we're covered on our end and make sure our road commissioner has, he's budgeted for what he, everything what you're doing is fine with me. I just, we just got to get clarity to make sure who's doing what. And the way we were explained to was, we thought that this 30,000 each side, we thought we're hiring. You and another company do everything. We were going to get right out of it. That's what we were under the impression. Now that we know it's different, well, you know, we can make the adjustments.
Yeah.
And the reason why we come with this number, it's not so much that it may be a big number, but I felt and I do recall, we're talking to you at one of our meetings that I was here, we felt that we may, we should have a little allowance above.
Absolutely.
Jolly, I, I do this. I understand. $30,000 is not a lot of money. Not when you start digging dirt. So, yep. Yep.
And the, the 112.5, the total for us with the 30,000, we also put a 10% on top of that. So we brought it to 125 for the warrant article, but now, because we thought that that 30,000 was the work. And Adam, did you believe that as well based on?
It was my opinion.
Okay. So somehow we all kind of got off, missed that altogether. But so we'll readjust and, and for the warrant and finance, certainly we want to ask your questions. But number-wise, hold off and give us a chance to readjust now that we know that that's going to happen. But thank you for the clarity. And I just figured that Mike hadn't seen this. So he didn't know what that number was going to be.
I apologize for putting you on the spot. I didn't realize you didn't.
I'm 160, man. I could put it all the way to Sanbretton for that.
[laughing]
It's like I said, you want me another few loads of gravel to give you a smooth transition? And if we got to cut the paving back a little bit more?
The only reason we need to know is because what we.
Right. Just to have a little cushion on both of you guys' bottoms in case of anything.
Yep.
It's not my mission to come here and charge you any more than I paid before.
The only, the only reason we, we, we need to know, we have to have our, our numbers solid enough. We know we need a cushion, but we're putting this on an article, you know, that we're, we're voting on. And there's going to be discussion at finance meetings and at town meetings. So we have to make sure that we got all our ducks in a row. And, and now we can.
I'll help you with it.
Yep. Great.
Appreciate that. Do we want to take some?
Yeah, I would say so. They've all been kind enough to come. I know there's a few members of the warrant and finance road committee here.
So how do we want to, I was going to say, I guess, does anybody have any questions? All right. Well, we'll start with.
Wait, wait, wait.
You got to.
Hold on, you're playing.
Yeah.
It's, there's no posting required, sir. It meets the HL93 federal load capacity. There's no posting required. Whatever you can drive over it, you can. That's the standard now is HL93.
What kind of permitting will be required by the DEP in May?
I don't need a permit. I'm not touching the water or any hydro, hydro soil in any way.
I believe that they consider the river to be in the protection zone.
We're not touching.
75% of the water.
We're not touching the water.
You have to get a permit if you move like even a yard of soil. Am I correct, David?
Hey, you're giving the class, not me. I mean, this is, this is a gentleman that does this for a living. I would think he probably knows a little bit about it, but I'm going to let him tell us.
Have you done many bridges in May?
No, I haven't. We don't touch any hydro soil. We don't touch the water. There's absolutely no hydro exhumation. Everything's down from the roadside.
My understanding, whenever I did any town road work, that we were under a different, um.
You're out.
When I go and change a road, a culvert, say at Wilson Lake, when I did the new dam up there, permit by rule, when you're working any roadway, it's different than when you're doing something off in the beaten path, as long as you are maintaining the roadway. Now, obviously, you know, we, we got to make sure we get our road commissioner call and, you know, call, call Ben Foster and make sure that there's nothing that, you know, we would need. He would tell us and he would refer us to DEP if we need be, I would believe. We could call DEP anyways, but obviously we want to cover our tails. But I think my first call would be to Ben Foster and ask him if there's anything that we need above and beyond what, you know, just to cover our tail. But you, you do, do you do them on the New Hampshire Main Line often?
We do them in Connecticut, Rhode Island. We do them in New Hampshire. As long as we are excavating any hydro soils, I mean, we have no impact at all to the water, i.e. copper dams, bypass pumping, sandbags, diversion.
Yep.
I do bridges all the time with permits. This one doesn't fall under that category.
Okay. Yep.
And it doesn't fall under New Hampshire's side either.
Yep.
Any other questions? No? Thought I'd have more questions here.
Sorry for putting you on the spot. I didn't realize that we were on a different wavelength there on the numbers. So I appreciate you coming in and speaking with us.
We're going to move on to Row Bridge. He's got a.
Oh, I forgot about that. I thought we were moving on.
Yep. So we can move on to Row Bridge.
After the, after the conference call Zoom meeting we had with the road committee and HEB, the follow-up on some of the engineering proposals that HEB had sent you, regarding Row Bridge, the selectman instructed me to reach out to Mr. Bean and have him go take a look at it. So he's done that. He's put a phenomenal binder together that Ed's got. Don't lose your guys' copy. Do you want to just kind of walk them through what's down there and what he'd recommend?
That's more like the kind of bridges that we do. I call it, again, I call it like a normal lap. So what you have there is a, a 20-foot span that's concrete abutments, concrete plate, and a concrete deck with aluminum cullits. I don't know if you've been under it. I tried to give you a couple of pictures of underneath so you can see it. I see so many different types of bridges when I go out and do these, but that's a first. They poured the abutments, wing walls. They took half cullits. I guess they're 30 inches. They laid it side by side and then poured 12 inches between them and about 16 inches of concrete over the metal cullits. The, the concrete spalling, we say spalling. If you look down at the wing walls and look at the concrete, every example is concrete from the 30s and 40s where you see six and eight-inch and four-inch rocks in the aggregate. Just a sign of the times. It's how they did it. Spalling is like a concrete that's deteriorated. If you took a hammer to it or a rock to it, it's like wet sheet rock. It'll start to break apart. That bridge, that bridge is seriously deteriorated. You know that. You wouldn't have to look at it. So the same thing on that bridge. The reason it's a little more money is there's quite a bit of demo and we can't have anything touch the water at all. We bring in a, we have six-foot hydraulic saws, four-foot, three-foot. What we'll do is sock out the cathedral headwalls off. I'm going to call them cathedral. The headwalls that you have, it looks like we just fixed a piece of one. We pour them, lift those pieces off, put them in a truck, send them to a concrete recycling facility, one in Farmington. Then what we do is we sock out the abutments. So there's quite a bit of sock out in it. We sock out under the legs of the deck. Then we set up on top and we sock out the deck into sections that are weight friendly so that we could pick them off with a crane and get them out of there. Same thing. The deck goes to a concrete recycler. We sock out the legs of the bridge at the top of the abutment because most times they're pinned. Then what I'll do is estimate both sides and I'll sock out the abutments down again. The reason is we have what we call an influence line when we design these kind of bridges. And I do these a lot to save towns 30,000 to 40,000 dollars in retaining a wetland's permit. If you leave the old abutments in place, even a portion of them, no permit required. I didn't touch the drink. So on yours, I'm going to bring it and say you have eight feet of abutment. After I cut the deck off and it's gone, we'll set that down and cut five feet of your abutment off with that same saw. And I'll leave a piece of your abutment about two or three feet tall. There's no bearing pressure on it. It'll key my blasted ledge or riprap in up to my new footers, which are considerably further away than yours. So in, in, in design like this, I have to come up with an influence line. And that tells me how long a depth I can offer you. We do them 83 feet long, 60 feet, 50 feet. I try to keep them in the 30s. So what I do is I come down to your top, to your footing, and I come up with an influence line that's two to one. And it has to get me to the bottom of my footing so that my bearing pressure vertically, when I, my footing pushes down, now that you don't have a deck, I, my influence can't flock your old abutment in the drink. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
A little bit. I'm trying to put it in layman's terms here. We leave the abutments a lot of times. I mean, in New York, they have me cut six inches off. That's it. Leave it. And my footers are way behind. In Connecticut, Rhode Island, they ask me to cut it down and then break it with grout so the water won't ever come up over the abutments and get behind the old abutments. What we do in New Hampshire is like what I offer to you. I don't, I don't need that wall to bear anything. But I leave two or three feet of it to show everybody we haven't touched the water. There's no shit, excuse my language, going into the brook. And we key in our two feet of blasted ledger riprap off from that old three-foot wall up to our new footers. So now, if you had a 20, I'm giving you a 34. I've already taken one line from the bottom of my footing to the, your old footing. Perceive that I have no pressure on your old walls. That's the influence line. That's what just determines to me how long a depth I can give you. So when I go out and look at one of these, I measure road to water. How thick is the deck? Is it skewed? Like this bridge is skewed 10 feet. All that comes into factor on how long a depth I can give you. Obviously, I try to give you the shortest one I can because it's 75% of the cost of these bridges. I mean, these bridges are state-of-the-art. It's a different approach. So many engineer friends of mine tell me, you don't charge enough. How much do you charge to be there two or three weeks? It's taxpayers footing the bill. I don't have a little bit go-to. I just, I, it's not how I work. You can send me home. My phone rings. I don't need to be here. But I, I reach out to so many small towns like that. Your kind of work. And if you ask them to look at some of the letters, I probably gave you 30 of them from different towns. I mean, it's what we do. In most towns, I get in and show them one. I do, I've done eight of them in Sanbretton. I've done six of them in Canterbury. Done five of them at Athens, Vermont. Then six of them in downtown Manhattan, New York City. Best place to work. They get it. Some towns get it, some towns don't. I go to some towns with this and they shake their head and then you see them with a bridge out with the statements, a million A. I'm like, you kidding me? I needed 150 grand a year ago. They don't say, you never wash the water, you can't even drink. We just walk the wire. So this is cut and dry. It's the same deal. Once, the demo was a big cost. I got to pour the pieces. I got to sock out the pieces. It's very pricey to get them out of there with a crane and get them to a concrete recycling facility, tap it into the brook. And we set back and dig out footers, put a structural fill stone, put in four-by-three footers, bring the deck. It's the same deal. Pin it. We pin the deck forward through the deck and pin it to the footers. We tie it together with the closure hardware. We grab the shear keys. We royston membrane the whole deck, gravel it, pave it, get the guardrail up. And I don't ask for any deposits. I don't ask for any acquisitions. I don't need any. But I'm done. I only paid for the north side of my roads.
Yep.
I mean.
Seems like an incredibly common sense approach to something that, you know, somebody's made, you know, a big deal out of and.
You got to think outside the box, you know? I, I did six jobs in Manchester, St. Airway. I built 11 miles of water in North Carolina. I did four miles of water in Wolfboro. I've been around for 38, 40 years. I can't compete with my competition buying gravel, buying crush, buying guardrail, buying paving, buying cops, buying signals. It's not my kind of work. So I kind of like, I said, you know what? Let me just stick out of the box a little bit and try to target a different area. And that's what got me into this.
You found a niche.
I mean, I did. I did. And I'll, and I'll tell you, when you see one, whoever sent to her, how much was Burge on? Over a million for Rude Bridge? Row Bridge?
Yep.
They know who I am. I mean, we do them all the time. And it's small towns, man, that need it. Vermont is so correct. You know, you're Connecticut. You know, Connecticut, these little back towns, they think you're God when you come in and do it. But you know what? If you read those letters, they all say a head is scheduled.
Letters are, yeah.
Professional.
Yep.
I mean.
Got some great references here.
That's what we do.
We have another question back there?
How, how are the guardrails between the bottom of the bridge you've been installing and the old elevation of the road?
Can you ask me that again, please, sir?
Okay. The elevation of the guardrail.
Scan it is 30 inches. And if you go, 226 inches. We probably get 30 inches in most New York towns because of snow. We're all in snow.
But you construct it?
I'm sorry?
What is it made of?
Government. The. The ped posts are, they're ped posts mounted to the bridge with anchorage for what, an impact load designed curve. In other words, all the bridge deck pieces will be 3 to 5 feet wide, 2 feet thick, 34 feet long. The outside piece will have an impact design curve. It has to meet the HL, uh, the TL, TL, I don't know what the hell it's called anymore. It has to meet the crash test requirements. You can't just pour a curve and knock it out of there. The reby or the last piece of deck has to meet the TL4. The reby comes over, is incorporated in the deck with the curve, so it's impact loaded. They crash a truck into over 65 miles an hour at Texas A&amp;M to design these impact load curves. So to answer your question, on the bridge, we put ped posts. If you drive down the road and look at bridges, you see a steel 1-inch plate with an ivy post that's bolted 4 times to the bridge curve, 6.25 spacing, that's standard for guardrails, 6.25 feet. When we get off the bridge, we transition to a standard guardrail, which is the steel posts and the steel WB and guardrail. We often flare the Enzo and just put a half wrap on it. Most of these bridges are 35 miles an hour, roads are under, so they don't require these big high-tech 12 and 15,000 dollar terminal end sections. A half wrap for the 4-foot radius off the road works. Like these out on the road bridge coming to the acting side on the right. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. What's the height from the existing grade of the road to the bottom of the new bridge?
Uh, 3 or 4 inches.
That's it.
We're just gonna leave you a gap and put the bottom of my deck above the paving on canal. On row, the grade of the deck is the same grade as your paving. And we'll pick that up a little bit because on this, I keep calling it Hopper Road.
Yep.
If you look at that, it's got a little bit of a dip in it, we're gonna get rid of that. We'll pick that up, don't need a lot of sitting on that. We think we can pick it up 18 inches. And that's a 2 feet thick, 22 inches thick, 2 feet thick. Depending on the scan, the thickness will go from 17 inches to 24 inches. But oftentimes, we try to transition to the road grade and give it some crown or 1-inch pitch from one side to the other so rain doesn't sit on it. But we looked at Hopper Road and looked at the saddle net and said, you know, I'll pick that up 18 inches and give them a smooth transition across here. So to answer your question, the deck is all in the ground on a normal bridge like Hopper Road. The deck is totally out of the ground on canal because of the kind of project it is. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. One other question, what kind of guardrails are you gonna put at Canal, is it similar?
The same thing, bridge, bridge ped posts, they're $500 posts that get bolted 4 times to the curve. Then we transition to steel posts when we get off the bridge. It's gonna be a little tricky on canal, because you're gonna be 3 feet higher than the road. We're gonna try to get those transitions in a little smooth so we can give you some guardrail. And I'm pretty sure we gave you 25 feet off all 4 corners. Standing guardrails 12 and 1/2 foot section, so we try to give you a 12 and 1/2 foot straight and a 12 and 1/2 foot with a 2 to 3 foot center back on it. Does that answer your question?
Will there be money to rebuild the old bridge and clean it up from the damage that's been done?
What old bridge?
The canal bridge, the one underneath. Will no work will be done to clean that up or fix it up?
No, we're not touching that bridge at all.
We really can't do anything with that bridge, it's historical, we're not supposed to do anything to that.
That's all, that's all part of the historical society, you're welcome to tell us that we enjoy your work, but we're going over the top, at least in the exercise.
We don't have any intention of doing anything other than taking the guardrails off.
Is there any thoughts of enforcing the weight limit on the bridge?
What?
Canal?
The 6,000 pound weight limit.
Are you talking about?
Are we talking canal?
Canal bridge.
You're talking to us or to him? Is that a good question?
All of you, whoever can answer.
Didn't he just say that we wouldn't need to, that the bridge is...
There won't be a weight limit on it when the new bridge goes in.
I'm talking about now so that we don't further...
Oh, oh.
...the old bridge.
There is a weight limit, didn't we already?
Well, it hasn't been enforced.
He's saying it's not enforced.
Oh, oh, okay.
With a camera, with a play reader, you could enforce it, you know, the fines are high enough, the 280,000 pound trucks would take your cameras.
I think we're gonna probably...
I even heard there was a large Shaw's truck that went over that bridge.
I think our idea is to hopefully get this done relatively quick, because I mean, as soon as town meeting's over and as soon as you can get in to do the work, but we can look into getting our deputy down there to keep an eye on things a little bit and...
And I'm sure Wakefield can have their...
Yeah.
Right.
Wakefield's a full-time PD.
I'm gonna hold a 70 and ask him to do...
Yeah, between the two.
The fines are substantial.
Yep.
$20 per thousand pound over the weight limit.
I'll reach out to him this week.
Unfortunately, though, the problem is, is I can't even drive over that with my pickup truck.
No.
And the other thing is to hold our police department down there and all kinds is crazy.
No.
A lot of things else for them to do, the launch trucks from across that bridge. So I would say that...
I think Charlie, we're heading towards the right direction to get rid of the problem.
You don't have to have a cop down there at all. When a truck is registered, the way you have your registration, the play reader picks it up, the information would come right to you. And you might be able to pay for some of the bridges and money you might make.
Okay.
You kind of can, can you?
Yeah. Go ahead, you can speak right from there.
Okay, my name is Philip Homely, I'm a member, vice chairman of the Wakefield Heritage Commission. One of our biggest concerns is when you stop drilling the holes for each end to put the foundation in on each end, you're gonna have to do some pilot holes to find out where you're gonna put the posts, I guess, support posts.
We're gonna make footers sort of 3 feet deep?
Yeah, but, okay, so what I'm concerned is when you test that, when you test to see where you're gonna put those, what do you use to...
Excuse me, can we just have you put your mask up? I know it's hard to talk.
You can hear me, right?
Well, I think we can hear you.
What I'm concerned is when you start drilling, drilling the holes, the vibration is not gonna deteriorate any rocks on that bridge.
You're 34 feet.
Is it gonna go out 30, how much on you, Jen? When you don't know how much, you drill them pilot holes, right?
We're gonna order a bridge 34 feet, you're at 20, the most you can be is 24. But we design these, I'm way back behind them rocks, and we won't do any drilling. We'll very easily deal with paving and set down and see what we got. But we're 34 feet, you're 20.
Which, I know the area a little bit, it's low ledge there, so you won't be going out far anyways, you'd be pinning the ledge.
We don't wanna touch your stone bridge, we like it, we think it's cool.
Okay. One other question.
Wasn't being sarcastic at all, we won't be near it, okay?
Liability insurance, you have, how much liability insurance you have just in case something goes wrong?
$2 million.
The bridge falls in the river?
$2 million.
How much interest do you have?
$2 million.
$2 million.
$2 million, okay.
We can't hire anybody in the town of Acton unless they get liability insurance and all that, and of course, we got New Hampshire and Maine both, I'm sure they do the same thing. We will let anybody work on any project down at Acton unless they are fully insured.
The standard in all AOT, DOT work is a million, 2 million general liability, a million auto, and a million workman's comp. That's what it takes to be pre-qualified with the state.
Any more questions?
Thought you had one up back.
No.
Okay.
Okay, no, all right.
Well, I guess I'd say appreciate it again.
Thank you very much for everything.
Very informative, I love the idea.
We are planning on putting on the warrant this year, we might have to adjust some numbers with the excavation, but this is something we are interested in doing.
Like I said, the only thing is if I can lock the precast.
All right.
We can't do anything until town...
We can't do anything till we go to town, yep.
Even if you think you're gonna do it, I mean, I need the 5 cents, a letter of intent to award something so I can say, hey, lock me in. I don't wanna come back to you for the fourth time and go, look, it's $5 million more again.
Right.
We can give him, we can give him a letter as long as it clearly states that it's approved at the June 19 town meeting.
We may feel uncomfortable, right? So it's just, I don't wanna ask them again to run it again. They do it to me all the time, I advise towns like you, March 20th I gave you the price, I go back, they might, oh, I gotta run it again, okay. So I keep going back to you, hey, look, I gotta run it again, it isn't me, it's the precast guy.
I'll get something.
I'm sorry to jack it. Is that right?
I just buy it.
I'll work on a letter for the board to review next week, a letter of intent.
I've only answered all your questions and you're happy. I've got a lot of experience, that is what I do, I reach out to small towns. I'm a farmer, I raise beef cattle, I raise lambs, I keep bees, I do label syrup, I got a big farm in San Francisco, New Hampshire. I just, I've been at this a long time, I worked for 2 big companies when I got out of school, and I started my own thing, and if you let me to where I am here, I'm not gonna dabble in with a tie shirt and just, it's what it is. Welcome to come up and watch us, you're welcome to see how it's done. Hopefully you'll ask me to do another one. I can save you some money, I'm gonna go somewhere else.
Great.
We appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I didn't bring my truck or cane and I didn't wanna break into my truck. If you need anything, Jen, at all, let me know.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do we wanna put any of this up on our website with his recommendation letters or anything like that for people?
Yeah, on Canal or Row or both of them?
Both of them?
I would think right now, the Road Bridge right now, we really shouldn't be doing anything till we get hold of Milton.
Then just Canal, because he did send us, you know, really nice. There is a lot of good, you know, he's got a lot of good recommendations.
I can take the paperwork from Canal and all the references and other stuff.
Yeah.
And scan it and put it online.
So people can see, you know, the list of things that he has done.
And I'll reach out to 70, Canal Bridge, and a letter of intent for you to look at for next week. You can sign a letter of intent as long as it clearly says what town meeting has to do.
Okay.
What was that thing? Oh, that, I don't have mine.
So do we wanna, wanna move on to B?
Yep.
All right, recreation committee openings?
The rec committee needs members, nothing else, no other way to sugarcoat it, we need some members, we're having a hard time. Hard time meeting quorum, the last meeting, you know.
How many are they looking for?
Well, we have, one of them decided she was no longer interested. We have 4, I mean, it'd be nice to get at least 3 more people.
Okay. 3 more people?
I mean, they're, you know, they're at a point where they're, like I said, they're having trouble getting quorum, you know, they're looking at some spring sports, but they need help. So if we want the rec committee to succeed and these sports to move forward, we really need some people to volunteer.
Can we try to get the school to advertise it again to the parents, maybe?
Sure.
C, marijuana committee, selectmen liaison.
So, last week we had a presentation from Mr. Fecto regarding some changes going on in Augusta. I think that we also heard from Mr. Nass on some of his thoughts. As I understood, we left it that I was gonna reach out to last year's committee members and see if they were interested. So far, we have a solid 8 people that are interested.
Cool.
In being on the committee.
How many from the last committee, quarter number?
I think that all but 1 we've reached out to, I think that there's just 1 individual that we weren't able to reach yet, I haven't given up on them, I just haven't, I don't know if I have the wrong number, but I'm just not connecting with them. But we've got a couple of new people. I'm looking for one more, and certainly we're not picking and choosing this committee, but I'm, I have a good enough idea of the people that are caregivers or people that may be against it, so I'm trying to weigh it so it's equal.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea.
That's how we did it before, yeah.
So I have, you know, so many caregivers and so many people that I think may be on the opposite, so trying not to stack it one way or the other, so I'm looking for somebody on one particular side to kind of offset it. The, and I am gonna recommend that a selectmen liaison be appointed to it, certainly not to attend every meeting, but somebody needs to, you know, these people are on opposite spectrums on what they feel about marijuana, so I need a selectman there to, at least the first meeting, to kind of make sure everybody plays well together and we get the first meeting, you know, set some boundaries and guidelines and objectives so that nobody feels intimidated on the committee. Who wants to play?
I'll do it.
Okay. All right, there we go. Once I find one more, we'll probably get a meeting scheduled and we'll let you know.
All right. D, April 27th, warrant recommendations?
Okay, so we're getting down to, down to our election. All right, so the Warren and Finance, we know, made recommendations on all the school committee warrant articles, they're meeting on Monday, the 22nd to vote on Article 2. So, this is the, submitted by voter petition, and I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure you guys saw the email that I sent the petitioner. You saw, he questioned why the Warren and Finance was making a recommendation and why you were having a public hearing on it. Did you see that email I submitted you? So, short of the main municipal statement that says that Title 30A requires that municipal officers hold a public hearing on the subject of an article to be voted upon by secret ballot referendum, anything other than a candidate election, and then our Warren and Finance recommendation, ordinance says the committee shall review all proposed warrant articles except any that involve the election of a municipal officer and shall obtain factual data. After due consideration and study, they make a recommendation. So I think the law is very clear that we need those recommendations on there, so we are moving forward. So looking for a yes or a no, because the ballot is gonna be a yes or no, so we're trying not to get into a whole lot more than that, but are you in favor of establishing a town ordinance that reads, "No person shall spread, discharge, or permit the discharge of straight road salt, sodium chloride, salt brine, calcium chloride, or magnesium chloride on any road within the Shoreland District, Resource Protection District, or within 300 feet of water wells, sand salt mix in the aforementioned areas," shall, I'm guessing it's supposed to be shall, that's a typo, "shall not exceed 20%." So we need a recommendation for the warrant. Remember, you have a public hearing coming up on the 12th, so we really don't have to get into all that, something I can put on the ballot.
I'll make a recommendation, we vote no.
The board of selectmen recommends a no vote?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
The board of selectmen recommend no, and that's gonna be 3 to 0.
I just, personally, I feel like this needs more work, that's one of my issues with this, because I feel like the top part of this and the bottom part contradict each other.
Well, I got a problem with the whole thing.
You know, so that's just, you know.
The problem with the whole thing is...
And I don't know how we would enforce it, so, so that's my take anyhow, I don't know.
The reason why, what would it not push us forward is we've got the state of Maine telling us we shouldn't be using any sand, we should be using all salt, and then you've got the 300-foot from the wells, which is almost impossible if you drive down 109, that just about, probably 85% of the wells are within 200 feet of 109. We can't turn around till the state, they can't, you salt on their roads, we'll end up with 109 maintaining that at some point. There's no way to enforce it. And the biggest problem is, is if anybody had any idea that what you end up doing is you'll use more salt than you originally would have used, because now you're dumping sand salt 3 times as many loads as you would have if you just ran out of load salt. So, it's counterproductive, there's no way to enforce it, it's going against everything DEP's telling us to do, everything, all these classes that we've taken is telling us what to do, it's completely backwards from what we should be doing. And if we did this, this would be a complete disaster for our road crews, a complete disaster, especially in an ice storm. And honestly, I think that, you know, the individual does not want this on a public hearing because of stuff like that, wants us just to slide through, and I really think the town of Acton really has to get out... to get out there and we've gotta let people know what's going on here. We don't wanna go backwards here, we wanna go forward. And if we have an issue with our salt, there's other ways of taking care of that issue. That issue can be taken care of by, you know, the stuff that the state says, get computers, this and that, monitor your salt. This is not the way to do it.
All right, well, moving on. E, Jim?
So Jim, so it's been a year since you've closed it during the pandemic. Um, the, um, some of the people that own some equipment in there, fire station, um, people just in general that want the equipment, they wanna know if it's a permanent closure. What are you doing? Can we start emptying out? What are your plans?
I thought.
Will you close it temporarily?
All right, I thought the fire chief was coming, I mean, to get his.
Um, well, he, I mean, you haven't officially closed it permanently. He is, I mean, if you do that tonight, he will be starting to get his stuff and then we'll have to go to auction for the rest of the stuff. Based on how it was obtained, the money's gonna go in one of his reserve accounts because it's essentially his equipment. We've got a few people that want their stuff back, so.
Much as I hate to, I mean, I think it's time to just close it down, cause it's sitting there idle. The pandemic's not doing us any good as far as trying to keep it running. Um, as much as folks, you know, say that, well, we'll clean the equipment when we're done, we're still leaving ourselves open for, you know, possible suit and whatnot, so I think it's lived its course. Fire Department will take some of the equipment back and they'll utilize the equipment for the members and that'll be that.
I agree.
It's never been a moneymaker, so, I mean, we've had problems trying to, we've pretty much gone through every option we could as far as trying to keep it going. The pandemic didn't help, so.
That, even when we, we tried to get the enrollment up to make it so it was self-sufficient, the numbers didn't really add up and.
Yeah, it works, worked briefly and then, yeah, maybe a month or two and that's it, so.
So I, I have a tendency to agree.
And we'll decide later what we're gonna do with the building.
The insurance company had put quite a few things.
Actually, yeah.
Uh, you know, up.
They started it.
Have to do too, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't wanna incur the cost of the town of Acton to fix it, but make it so we do it.
All right, so I guess I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, I guess that we.
Nobody wants to be there.
We should, yeah, well, I'll do it. I'll make a motion that we close the gym permanently.
I'll second that.
And revert the equipment back to, once it came.
Right for us.
Yep.
It's moved, seconded, all in favor. Moving on to poll permit.
Langley Shore Drive was my.
Is that a town section of a private? I think that's on the private part. It says one mile, Langley Shore says on a mile long, so it's gotta be down the private part. So I don't even think we'd.
Will we even do anything if it's on the private?
We don't know in the right of way, so.
I mean, I think the poll permits are more for just a, um, a record-keeping purpose or the.
I thought we said we weren't even gonna really bring.
Well, they, according to CMP, they, they're required to file the poll permits with the clerk's office, the board has to accept them and we file them away in a book, but I don't know what, I mean, no one's ever.
What it is, is they're, they're gonna be in our right of way. The town's right of way, but it, I thought it only pertained if they were putting a new poll in and they didn't have one, but.
Intersection of Buzzel Road and Langley Drive, so. Do we have to make a motion on this?
You have to pass.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the permit for, was it Langley Shore and, and Buzzel Road?
Yeah, it says.
I'll second that.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor. All opposed. Would you sign?
Last page, so.
Yeah, usually the place to sign it.
All right, let me see if I kept the page from you. I can double check the attachment, we can go back in, I don't have the fourth page.
Okay.
You guys all signed up?
All right, we'll take it if you get it.
I don't see a spot where to sign it, so.
I'll just initial this one right here.
All righty, moving on to G. Sexual Abuse Prevention Policy Draft.
All right, so an email from the treasurer, um, based on some new insurance suggestions, I've drafted the attached policy that she's copied from other organizations. Um, they would like you, the board, to review it, amend it, approve it, um, get it set into place before the rec starts any activities. Uh, we've also put in the rec box, applications for criminal background checks, which need to start happening, um, with anybody working with the kids. So, uh, this is just a draft, ask you to take it home and, uh, review it and hopefully put it on next week's agenda with any changes or signatures. It's really pretty basic, just calling for a background check, putting a coach's pledge out there, limit the one-on-one contact, talks about taking home and picking up, touching sleepovers, um, things that you would hope we would never need a policy on, but that's where we're at.
Um, H, Planning Board Appointment.
So for two weeks, I have advertised, um, a planning board appointment. Um, I've gotten two calls on it. Well, the first one was, um, first one was a messenger, some, um, emails, um, that the first individual showed some interest. Um, she's actually out of state and I asked her to contact me when she gets back. She kind of wanted to know just what it entailed and, you know, what it, what it would require. Um, I, I feel like it was on Facebook and I, I tried to say, no, call me in the office, I try not to get into too much.
What was the first name?
That's the first one, I think I, didn't I put on there that one was?
Made contact.
Made contact and then, okay, so that one, the made contact, never said officially that, that she was interested in the position, she just wanted to know more about it. She indicated she was out of the state for, um, a few weeks and she may touch space when she gets back. The other individual called me and flat out said, I am interested and I'm ready to go. Um, remember, this is only an alternate and it's only good until June. Um, they do have a lot going on, including training going on, so if you're happy with a second individual, which I personally don't know why you wouldn't be, um, you know, it'd be a recommendation to appoint him so that the seat can get filled, or you can run it a few more weeks.
The seat's only till June, you said?
The alternate position, this is, um, Mr. Crunkle's position, he was an alternate until the end of June.
All right.
So.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Mike, Mike Demarest to the planning board as an alternate.
I was hoping we could talk to the first individual first, but.
Well, you can, yeah.
Yeah, I'd prefer.
It's only till June.
Yep.
Try to call.
Is that gonna happen?
I guess not.
Try again.
Yeah.
C.
No, no, and I'm not sure, I mean, I mean, it may be the end of the.
I mean, if the first one's not interested, then we'll, I just, I just wanna talk to, I mean, yeah, I mean, we've pretty much already talked to Mr. Demarest, we know who, when, where and why.
About the planning board?
Yeah, we know, you know, we know everything about him, I'd just like to speak to the first individual and see contentions and whatnot.
Yep, we'll, uh, reach out when they return.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, public comment.
All right, a public comment, nice.
All right, moving on, announcements.
All right, I, hopefully we have them all, so, let's see, so planning board is meeting tomorrow, Warren Finance Monday, which is to do the petition article, Board of Selectmen policy, road commissioners, and fire chief, all next Monday. Board of Selectmen, Mary Grant is that Saturday, and hopefully you can make it, cause still a little.
I hope so.
We're ironing out some internal issues.
Yeah.
Um, Warren Finance on the 29th, that's when he invited the treasurer, myself, and the full Board of Selectmen to go over general government.